Sixteenth. Uh, Sherri, could we have a roll call, please? Here?
Here?
Here.
He's muted.
You're muted again, John.
Sorry, I'm here.
There.
Great. Um, Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Lottis, would you lead us, please?
Ready? Oh, let's see, is there a flag somewhere?
There we go.
Okay. Ready, go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, for which it stands, under nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda is Public Communications. Sherri, Lucas, do we have any people waiting in the wings or emails that have come in about items on tonight's agenda? Or items that are not on tonight's agenda?
Nope, nothing, nothing we can do.
Seeing none, let's move on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, December 2nd. Uh, any comments? Questions, changes, corrections from any commissioners? If not, I'd like, uh, like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to start approval.
Okay, for discussion, I'll say, I'll second that. Any discussion? All right, Sherri, let's have a roll call on the minutes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Terrific, okay. Uh, we do have a public hearing on an item with an actual physical address in the city. So I'd like to, uh, hear about disclosures of site visits and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Nolan?
Um, I have been to the site before, and I did actually talk with the owners months ago, um, a little bit about the project, but, it won't sway anything that I'm doing, so that's, that's my, my take.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis?
Um, I've had no ex parte contacts and I, uh, have, uh, gone by the site again to re, just re, to refresh myself, um, but that's it.
Okay. Yeah, this was before the commission a couple of years ago.
Right.
Commissioner Trent?
Uh, no contacts, but I did go by the site.
Okay. And Commissioner Swift?
Yes, I went by the site. Uh, I've had no ex parte contact.
Okay, and I likewise have visited the site, no ex parte contacts. All right, our public hearing item is a, a collection of permits, uh, for two oh four and two oh six Kenyatta Street. Lucas, would you take us through an introduction to this item?
Yes, thank you, um, Chair and, uh, Planning Commission members. The ad before you tonight is a, um, proposed expansion at two oh four, two oh six Kenyatta. Um, it's the business referred to as RTK Studios. Uh, they're, they have a proposed expansion. What I'd like to do is, I've got a little bit of a PowerPoint here. Um, I'd like to just run through here quickly and then, um, given the, the number of applications that are applied to this expansion, I think it's important that, that I identify some of those and give some clarification to why those, um, applications were submitted and what they cover with this, um, expansion. So I'll need to share my screen here. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, so, um, the, the existing site is, um, it's an existing kind of a ceramic arts and tile business. The existing studio is, is shown here, uh, at the top of this site plan here. Uh, totally about twenty seven hundred square feet in overall square footage. Uh, the, there's also an existing single-family, one-story, uh, residence that's vacant, um, located to the south. Uh, there's an existing garage storage facility to the east, and mind you, north is, is this way, is to the, is on the top with south being to the bottom, east and west, Kenyatta Street to your west. The, the proposal itself requires actually four different permits, uh, through the Community Development Department. And I want to run through each of these, so the, the commission and, and the audience listening can kind of understand where and why each of these have been applied for, given the parameters of the proposal itself. And then I'll go into the proposal and the expansion that's proposed. Um, typically with a tentative parcel map, the first one up, uh, uh, it's, it is a land use tool which allows for subdivisions and/or merging of lots. Um, and in this case, a parcel map or even a lot line adjustment could be applied for here. Uh, however, given that there's a development that's, that's tacked on with this proposal, the tentative parcel map is the more appropriate, um, feature. Like, for instance, if it was, um, just simply moving lines around and there was no development or proposal, uh, that was coming forward, a lot line adjustment would be, would be appropriate. Um, given, given the, the nature of no, no development made proposed. In terms of the planned development permit that's tied to this, yeah, that's kind of an interesting one, too. It kind of provides some creative innovative, uh, development. With that, there is required parking, um, that they're looking at having reduced. Uh, there's a driveway width that would be, um, reduced, some setbacks that would be adjusted. And then there's this turnaround component that we'll look at a little bit later for, um, for, for pickup and deliveries of, of, of trucks, vehicles. And then there's, there's a third permit is a conditional use permit. Uh, you would think a conditional use permit is required because the use chart identifies it that way. Not necessarily. In this case, this is a use that's been in place since, um, nineteen ninety-five as a part of, in an original conditional use permit, actually, for a change in use. This building that we're, that we're, um, looking at and expanding on, um, was originally a single-family residence that was converted into, uh, commercial use or commercial operation. In two thousand and four, I mean, there was a major rewrite to the code, uh, that use unfortunately became, um, non-conforming because of the manufacturing warehouse, uh, use that's tied to that, um, storage. It's also being used for storage as well, for the product that they have there. Within the code itself, it actually allows for, um, that non-conforming use to be expanded on. However, in order to do that, there are specific findings that have been identified within the code. So, in kind of a roundabout kind of way, it is a conditional use permit to allow for a non-conforming use to be expanded on. And then the fourth one that we're looking at here in terms of the permits, uh, is the design review permit. And that design review permit, we've been through, we've talked through what that designer per, designer review permit allows for and what its purpose is. And it's really the exterior alterations. Um, in this case, it happens to be within the VMU, the Village Mixed Use, um, zoning district. So with this expansion, um, the expansion is a two-story expansion. There's exterior elements and, um, components and design features that are uh, in harmony with the original design. So with that, I just want to give you kind of an overview of those, of those permits and, and the map that's going along with, with this project. I should also mention in the beginning here that the Planning Commission is acting as a recommendation body to the City Council. This item will go before the City Council. So Planning Commission is providing a recommendation tonight. Um, that's what staff is, is looking, that's what the applicant is looking for. Um, and then, uh, this will be on the laps and for consideration by City Council, um, in the near future.
Uh, Lucas, I noticed, um, a, uh, an email today that said the City Council meeting for next week has been canceled. Uh, so the next one would be about the twelfth of January. Do you know if this is going to be on the agenda for City Council by the twelfth?
It would be a tight window for it to be on the twelfth. Um, given, given what we're looking at here, jumping into the holiday season. Could it be? Maybe. And I don't want to make any guarantees on that, but just, just keep that in mind. It would be the, the twelfth or the twenty-sixth of January.
Okay.
Um, so anyway, the, the proposed expansion that we're looking at here, it's really the merging of two lots into one. That parcel map that we had, had just looked at in terms of these, these permits in the process is taking those two, uh, lots that I had identified in the beginning here and, um, would basically dissolve the middle line. Let me go back to that one here. So this middle line would be dissolved in favor of this being one lot. It would be going from two lots that are each roughly seventy-five hundred square feet in area to one lot that is roughly fifteen thousand square feet in area. In addition to that, so it would vac, so you, essentially, there would be that vacant, single-family residential home that you saw to the south that would be removed in favor of the expansion, the two-story, um, expansion of the RTK Studios. And that's in addition of about thirty-five, um, roughly thirty-five hundred square feet. In terms of the onsite relief, you're looking at reduced parking. Right now, the parking parameters for this expansion would yield a requirement for, uh, for five parking spaces, uh, for, for the expansion and the uses that are onsite. Park, parking not only for the expansion of the, um, for the warehouse and the manufacturing type of, of use that's taking place there, but also for, uh, an onsite unit, residential unit, that would be, um, there. Now, the reduction in parking isn't for that residential unit. Your residential unit will actually be parked. It's the out, onsite relief for parking for the expansion. And we can get, we'll go into that here in a little bit, but in addition to, to the onsite relief, we're looking at the driveway width being reduced. The code requires a driveway width, um, two lane for any new or expanded construction to be twenty-four feet in width. This is proposing a twelve-foot width, um, twelve, fourteen-foot width. Um, and then that'll allow for trucks to come in along the south side of the site, and I'll show a site plan here in a minute, um, which will include truck turnaround areas in the back. So let's move on to the site plan. So here is the expansion, uh, on the top or to the north of the site is the existing studio. That's getting reworked to a certain degree. The residential is being, being pushed to commercial. That residential piece that was here previous is being shifted to this proposed residential unit where the expansion is taking place. There's also an addition here that you're seeing, that I'm outlining here. And that is for the commercial loading and storage, uh, or warehouse portion of that as well. I mentioned earlier that there's a, um, a drive aisle, and that's along the south side here. That's to allow, I don't know if you can see the wording here, but it's a loading ramp here. And then as trucks come in, they'll be able to make a three-point turn. It's kind of like a hammerhead turnaround, um, for the trucks, so that they can turn around and then, um, have their face shooting out towards Kenyatta Street.
Lucas, does the, um, the, does the turnaround, is it much, why are we, um, why is the relief being granted with the turner, truck turnaround? Is it indentionally, or is it just the fact that there's an onsite truck turnaround? That, that's a, a, a cause for some sort of relief?
There was circular, there was going to be a circular, um, kind of pattern of, of, um, internal circulation, if you will. And in favor of preserving some of this onsite, and I, I think the architect could probably speak to this a little bit more. But in favor of that, um, a, a truck turnaround in terms of the three-point turnaround, um, has been proposed. Now, typically, the, the requirement would be some sort of a variance to allow for some alleviation to that. The, the PDP or the Plan Development Permit allows for that relief, as long as it's, as long we've get, we've got some creative innovative development project, um, that's in favor of that. And that's kind of what we're looking at here, taking an existing, uh, use and expanding that use and being somewhat creative in terms of how that use can continue to operate, uh, at its current capacity with the gallery in the front and some of that storage and loading taking place also onsite. So, anyway. Um, all right, so let's move on. Wanted to show some elevations here.
Uh, Lucas, in terms of the parking, you said it's down to two spaces. I see two cars there.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Two spaces for the residential unit and an additional five are required for the commercial operation?
So the commercial operation and, and, um, in addition to the residential, so there's residential parking that's being provided here, and that's to the rear. This is to the rear of the property here. They have two parking spaces. Uncovered. There are just two spaces that are dimensioned out here. Through the PDP or the Plan Development Permit, um, it allows for the reduction of parking, as long as that reduction is, is justified. Meaning that use that's being expanded on, um, isn't going to really generate additional parking, given the existing or the proposed use. In this case, it happens to be an existing use, um, in terms of what we're looking at here. So the, the existing RTK Studio, uh, use already has a gallery, and really, the, the majority of their use has been in operation, um, since nineteen ninety-five. Uh, and they've just run out of room, and they need, they're busting at the seams, if you will. They need to do some sort of an expansion to allow for additional onsite storage of their, of their product. And then also for the distribution piece as well. Um, I believe within the, their description, they have, they've identified that the, the trucks end up coming once a week, once every other week, uh, depending on the demand. So the use itself is, is already minimal in terms of the, the amount of parking. Um, and that's been the case for twenty-plus years. The expansion is just to allow for additional products to be stored onsite.
As, as I recall, there was, there was an allowed reduction of parking just with the existing studio way back.
Yeah, part of their conditional use permit back in nineteen ninety-five, they went, I think they had three required parking spaces, and then they got a reduction to, to only require two onsite. But they've been operating with two since, really since the approval in ninety-five.
But was that, was that three for the commercial operation plus two for the residents?
It was just, it was just three overall.
Three overall.
Spaces overall.
And that, that CUP stays with the parcel, but the parcel is two oh six?
Yeah, so the, it, it runs with the land. Um, that's a good, that's actually a really good point. Conditional use permits run with the land. Um, and they can either be amended, or you can add an additional conditional use permit. Uh, and in this case, adding an additional conditional use permit was the more appropriate route, given the non-conformity of that use. So, anyway.
Okay.
But, but with the conditional use, I mean, the use is, is this really essentially the same, so it would continue to apply, but I, um,
Intensity.
That's true. It does not, yeah, it's not Nolan Boyd. That CUP is still in effect.
Yeah. Um, so was there any discussion? I'm just looking at the site plan now. I didn't think of this earlier. But, um, do you, do you have any feeling that, um, could there be like a, a compact space added as a third, um, parking space at the rear without interfering with the, uh, tr- truck turnaround, do you think?
Talking about somewhere in here?
Yeah.
I think it's going to be, I think it would be pretty tight, uh, given, given the, the, really the need for adequate turning, turnaround.
Yeah.
Um, area.
I mean, I don't, do we, do we dimension the length of a compact space? Is it less than the?
It's two feet less.
It's two feet less. So, I mean, I, I don't know, that might be able to squeeze something, just something a little bit additional in there. Anyway.
I, I believe the architect is, is here tonight and can probably speak to that as well as the applicant. Um, I'd, I'd almost like to have them
Yeah.
Uh, speak to that and see whether or not they've tried to dimension that out. Any other questions before I move on?
Cool.
Okay. All right, so then we have the elevation here, uh, which is facing Kenyatta Street. So you have, top here, you can see the, the new addition, which is to the right. And it includes a two-story. Now, the way in which that two-story is proposed to operate and function is it would be recessed from the, from Kenyatta, and you'll see a side profile of this as well. Doesn't necessarily read as, as clear here. It's kind of flat, um, along the western elevation. Here is the existing studio, um, which was at one point sing, a single-family residence converted in ninety-five to what it is today. And then here's the north elevation. So the north elevation would be at the top of that site plan we were looking at earlier. And here you can see that existing residence. Beyond that, you see a little bit of that addition, and then that second story pop up a little bit here. This line represents that projected upward twenty-five-foot, um, height limitation. And here, I wanted to show the, the rear elevation and showing that they're, they're proposing a trash and mechanical, um, that'll be tucked in the back away from and not visible from the, from the whole driveway or Kenyatta Street. And then you kind of see that massing of the two-story. And one might think, well, with a two-story, is it, is there, are there other two stories that exist, um, surrounding and within this neighborhood? And the answer is yes. Um, in fact, directly to the south is a two-story, single-family home. Uh, and, and it, it sits at, which is really partially the reason for that two-story being tucked on the south side of this, of this lot or the bottom of this lot versus maybe adding on to the studio, the existing studio, where it kind of creates that, um, that easy or, or agreeable transition from this site to the site to the south and vice versa. And then here's that south elevation. I was just speaking to the, um, the kind of the recessed earlier, the recessed second story piece. Here's your, here's your single-story component, and then your second story rising up.
And that stuff just above the single-story, that is the existing building?
Uh, right here?
Yes.
This is actually new. This is a part of the new, um, expansion. I believe this actually
That's the central piece?
Yeah, this is the central piece that rises up above. Here's your, here's your first floor for, um, for that expansion. So anyway, with that, staff's recommendation, uh, staff's recommending Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number twenty-dash-ten, which is a part of the packet tonight, recommending City Council approve, approval of the design review permit, tentative parcel map, planned development permit and conditional use permit, as the findings required within the municipal code can be made and then subject to the conditions. And within the resolution itself, there are findings that have been baked in, um, that address the design review permit, the tentative map, the planned development permit and the conditional use permit. So with that, if the commission has any questions of staff, um, I could certainly answer them. I do know the applicant is, or applicant and architect are, are here tonight as well, or in the audience, the virtual audience.
Um, Commissioners, any additional questions for staff at this point?
I had a quick question.
Please.
Oh, um, I know in our commercial, um, district, bike parking is required, but this is VMU. Is it also required? Because I know VMU is considered commercial.
Wait, say that again.
Uh, bicycle parking is required on commercial property uh, applying for a permit, and because this is zone VMU, but essentially it's commercial. Um, is it required?
Uh, bicycle parking is typically required. I didn't see parking, bicycle parking identified here.
I didn't, but I, yeah, I had the question.
Yeah, we, the, it could be added as condition, or we could have the applicant speak to that bicycle parking, um, provision as well.
Okay, now that they have a lot of, you know, street traffic necessarily, but, um, you know, just, uh, covering all bases here.
Right, it promotes, yeah, it promotes the, uh,
Should be done. Should be done. Good idea.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we can come back to that later. Uh, is the applicant or the applicant's representative here? Apparently not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a slight delay here.
Can you bring him in? Okay.
So Mary is in and Mark is.
Welcome.
Hi.
Uh, would you like to tell us, uh, about the project and what you hope to accomplish and why we should approve it?
Um, well, for a lot of years, we've been very overcrowded in our current studio. Um, we've made by, uh, with, I don't think we've got like eight or nine sheds out back, including the garage. Um, um, it's kind of like a family of eight living in a single-bedroom house. So we need to expand. We attempted to expand to another location in town. Um, this came up as an option, and it kind of works out better because it's next to our existing studio, so we can keep the machine running here at our existing studio and get the extra space that we need, you know, on the adjacent property.
And, and the expansion is just for warehouse and distribution? Your manufacturing space is such as the same?
Yeah, it's just taking everything out of the sheds and putting them inside. So, um, we have these, uh, shelving units. We have thirty-three of them right now. When the new build is done, we will have added six additional ones, so, uh, thirty-nine shelving units. So right now, we're using thirty-three. Uh, we're make, yeah. So basically, it's kind of like the storage of our inventory, our product that's available for sale and, um, um, elbow room.
Well, and it's also so that we can play our work better without people having to kind of walk through the areas where we're glazing. walk through the areas where we're glazing tiles and so forth. And by the way, just for what it's worth, we sort of had to deal with the issue of manufacturing before we were able to do our current studio. And technically, we're not manufacturing. We're, we're, our art form is on tile. And we also do some three-dimensional work with clay. It's kind of like a Potter studio where everything's hand done. It's not usually referred to as, uh, manufacturing. It's, it's a craft. And we've been at it for forty years. So we just, you know, we, we, we're kind of tripping over, um, things that we would like to be able to make the, the flow for people that come in to look at our work and to work, sit down with us and work on designs and so forth, to be more comfortable and, and more aesthetically pleasing because it's not as crowded. It wouldn't be as crowded. And our, our warehouse is really more of a stockroom of things that we've made that we can both have, um, inside the main building rather than out back where people have to go basically look at things in a garage, which isn't, isn't, isn't the best, um, look for what we do. Um, gets a little bit, um, uh, embarrassing at times because we've got things going on out there that, you know, just kind of messy until we finish them. That kind of thing.
So the extra storage space would be, it sounds like a combination of things. One, your, your, uh, raw material, if you will, plain tile that hasn't had anything done to it, clay that hasn't, uh, and a mixture of that with finished product for sale.
Um, there won't be any raw material being stored. Mostly it's finished product and, um, artwork, silk screens that we need to keep on hand. Some of the silk screens are quite large. And we have quite an inventory of silk screens, but the raw material, the production will stay the same. Um, it's pretty low. We've kind of fit into this neighborhood. We're probably one of the quieter, um, properties on the, the neighborhood. Uh, but there, we won't be storing raw materials at all.
But, well, I mean, a little bit because our glaze, our, our glazes, we make them ourselves and so forth.
Sure.
We, we're not looking for more room for that. It's just kind of diverting people that come in to look at work. Right now, we have a hard time to find places to display larger murals and things like that because, um, they're kind of stacked up one on top of the other and that sort of thing. Plus, I thought I should just mention that it's just Mary and me. We don't have any, uh, employees here. We have, um.
Well, for the last year, we haven't had any workers.
Yeah, and we have a, we have a friend with a pickup truck. That's about the biggest vehicle that comes to CS when it comes to like a commercial truck turnaround.
I'll get to that.
Yeah, that's another story.
Uh, Commissioner Nolan, you had a question?
Yeah, what I think a couple of my questions just got answered. So I was gonna ask if you were gonna have any more employees or if you saw an increase in production, but it sounds like production's gonna stay the same, not an increase in employees. Do you envision that you may have more visitors coming to the showroom than you did in the past? I mean, I know that's kind of speculation, I guess, but.
We, we do a lot online. Um, and then the only other one is you were, were, the tourists come in. So, you know, other than the, you know, just it's a walking town and they, they walk through and, yeah.
Bart's Books contributes a lot to that. And this isn't a complaint of Bart's Books. A lot of times they, they see us and they go.
Oh, she's trying to talk.
Yeah, I was gonna say, plus you had, you're, the architecture is very interesting from the outside. So it's kind of alluring to draw to come inside and see what you've got going on. So, okay, I, basically where I was coming at with that was I was trying to see if there was gonna be, you know, increase in traffic. And, you know, I know that, uh, with the permits, you're gonna have a reduction in parking just to, you know, verify that that was going to be, um, adequate. And it sounds like, once again, that it most likely will be, but we'll get a little more information and go from there. But thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions for the owners?
Well, I'll, I'll ask my question.
Please.
Um, so, so I, I, um, I really admire the business that you do. I think it is really quintessentially Ojai, and it belongs in our town. And we need, uh, I'm very happy to try to be flexible with, with, um, what you're doing. Um, but I, but with the reduction of the parking, I just, um, I wondered in looking at the site plan if you think that you could, could someone who's coming to for an appointment or whatever, um, do you think they could either park, uh, um, may have another space, even if it's a compact space in the back? Or, uh, perhaps even be able to fit a vehicle, um, in that concrete section. I, it's labeled as a concrete, concrete walkway, and I forget what the width is, but, uh, to the north side of the property, would somebody, you know, before you have your fence, would somebody be able to pull in far enough to avoid the sidewalk up there?
Yeah, we have people parking there for pickup. And also the way, when we're moving the one driveway of the house two oh four Kenyatta to the south, it will increase another spot on the street. The way the two driveways are, you can kind of get one and a half cars in front, so it'll allow for a, a third car. And then, um, yeah.
But you could at least get one visitor car parked off the street in that, um, to, on the north side of the.
They could park in either driveway. Yeah. So if we put our vehicles in the back, um, they could park in, in either driveway.
Either driveway. Yeah. Okay. So there is some option for, um, basically accommodating the few visitors that you might have. And I know, and I know just from observation that it's a, that it's a pretty quiet operation.
Yeah, if I could just, um, say one thing that just keeps popping back into my mind. In all reality, we probably have, we average like three, uh, visits from people in a car per week and sometimes nothing for two weeks. You know, it's, it's, it's very low key that way. Most, it's, it's by appointment. If somebody does show up without an appointment, we'll let them in. But, um, it's, 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 um, like, if, if we had somebody surveying us and, and, and just kind of sitting there and watching how often somebody comes by, it, it's nothing compared to, um, just what happens in, in the rest of the neighborhood, not to mention the Arc Center that typically has about thirty-two cars parked up and down the street, around the corner and so forth. So it, it, you know, we're not, we're not like a hardware store where we're expecting people to drop by, you know, ten or twenty times, uh, a day. Uh, it just doesn't happen that way here.
Understood.
Uh, John or Jake, any questions?
I got a quick question, and I apologize if you've already mentioned this, but, um, do you guys currently live at the residence? Are you, are you planning to live there after the redesign?
Yeah, but no, we sleep, we're here all the time, but we, our house is about a half a mile away. We don't sleep here.
Alright, alright. I was just curious. I didn't know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jake, any question?
He's on mute.
Oh, you're on mute, Jake.
My bad. Yeah, no, I don't have any questions. I, I like the design. I like the idea. And I think, uh, you know, we should support the local businesses that have been established here for quite a while as the applicants are. Um, so yeah, I'm, uh, no, no questions.
Okay. I, I have, I have a couple more, and I see Mr. Whitman, the architect, is here. I'll have a couple for him as well. Uh, back to the owners. You say you don't live on the property now, and you don't plan to live on the property. What's the residential unit for?
Um, sometimes Richard is up late, uh, monitoring the kilns. Um, at times it works as a doghouse. And then sometimes I just want to take a nap during the day. So it's small. Um.
It's a spillover residential property.
Huh?
Home away from home.
The spillover, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. We're not agreeing with each other.
Um, I, as I, I mentioned, I see, uh, Mr. Whitman, the architect, is here. Is there anything you'd like to add? Um, as part of the applicant's, uh, presentation, sir? I think you're muted.
No, I think it was a, okay, uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm really good friends with, um, Richard and Mary, and, um, I'm really, I was just really helping them out, get through the, um, you know, the technical issues and, you know, the processing and, and architectural plans, but truly their brainchild. It's a, it's a phenomenal design, but I can't take any credit for it. Uh, it's really their brainchild, and I was just happy to help them, assist them, you know, get through the process. And, uh, so if you have any questions for me regarding, um, anything, I'm, I'm here.
Okay. Well, I had one at least. Um, I noticed on your, on your, uh, drawing package, uh, a two-point zero. Uh, there, there's a, a neighborhood plan in your drawing package that points at off-site public parking. And, and I don't know who design, who, which of you made that designation, but that's not public parking. It's private. AT&amp;T owns the property.
Oh, really?
I, I'd like to come back to the parking with Lucas as well, but, but I wanted to make that clear that that property is not public parking. It may be used that way, but it's not, it's not city-owned, public parking.
Uh, that's my mistake.
I just want to clarify something here regarding that. It is not, it is not publicly owned. That is correct. But there are spaces that have been designated for public use on that site, um, in favor.
By AT&amp;T?
Yes. That was a part of their deal from the.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Okay. Um, uh, back on the, on the topic of parking, you said earlier in, in the, in the opening there, Lucas, that that the two oh six property already has a CUP that allowed for a reduction to two parking spaces. Does that change one with the redesignation from whatever the zoning was to VMU? And, and if it does not, does that CUP carry over and allow only two parking spaces on the merged lot?
Yeah, so I think it's, just to be clear here, that conditional use permit handled and addressed the use change from the residential use from the nineties to the commercial use that they're currently.
Right, okay.
It addressed that, and then, and, and in that proposal, the reduction in parking also addressed that specific use. Now, it carries over in terms of how this overall property is handled. Um, but we also need to look at, so, for instance, if we were looking at a parking scenario like we're looking at here in terms of a total of five parking spaces, realistically, that reduction is still in play as a part of this CUP. That CUP still holds ground. It doesn't get pushed to the side because the use itself has been expanded. It, you can almost call it credit, if you will, to how it was addressed in the nineties versus how it's being addressed today. Um, we don't discount the CUP. It still is in play. It's just this new CUP that's being addressed is handling the expansion per the code. Now, in terms of parking, I, I think that's really what you're getting at here.
Right.
Um, shared policy. In terms of parking, the overall parking requirement is five. That's three spaces onsite for the expansion and that, um, the storage warehouse use, and then the two parking spaces, um, designated and required for the residential use.
Okay, are there as many as three in the, the space, the AT&amp;T lot that was designated public?
I believe it was, I believe it was.
There?
Yeah, I believe AT&amp;T had identified, um, as a part of the negotiations, I think something like eight spaces that could be potentially used for, for, um.
Overflow.
For, yeah, well, for, I would, I don't want to call it overflow. I want to say that it's really more for, um, for the community versus specifically designated for, um, that use. And that use being eight, the AT&amp;T site. They have, they already have a requirement for five parking spaces within that, um, parking lot.
And thirteen sounds about like the size of that lot.
Yeah.
Um, is it, is it within the parameters of the code to use spaces over there? Or would it require a shared parking arrangement with AT&amp;T?
If they're wanting, if they're wanting to pursue that, if they're wanting to pursue that, that is one of the options that, that they could look at. I did not provide that as a condition, but it's certainly something that could be, um, addressed. If you recall correctly, or even, um, just to remind the commission, when Hakani Sushi went forward, uh, a few months back, we had a parking agreement already and inked, inked in. And then, um, there were some revisions that were asked for, and they had to go back to the table and talk to, to that owner. Um, as opposed to having them ink a deal now versus later. Um, I chose later, given the parameters that happened at Hakani Sushi, to give them the opportunity so they're not at the table twice. They're only at the table talking once.
But essentially, what I think where you're going to Quillis see is that if so desired, we could make the condition that they, um, go into an agreement with AT&amp;T to.
Or, or someone, yeah, for, for free space. Yeah.
That's one of the options.
Okay, yeah.
What are, what are the other options, Lucas?
To re, well, there, one of the other options could be to reduce the parking, given the parameters of this use. This use is not adding square footage. It's not increasing the foot traffic. You're talking about an, an increase in, in the square footage to allow for onsite storage. They're already bust, I mean, you just, you heard Mary and Kennedy talk about it. Uh, they're busting at the seams with the storage that they currently have. That would be offloaded, wouldn't increase the overall perception in terms of parking. So the, the reduction appears justified, and I've identified that there, um, within the, um, findings to only require two parking spaces onsite. Um, if there is a need for it to be offloaded, one of those options is to look at securing a parking, reciprocal parking agreement, um, offsite. They've identified one within five hundred feet. They would have to work through that agreement, um, to get those places. If the commission believes, um, through the findings and justification, that three additional parking spaces need to be identified somewhere.
Okay, well, I, I'm just asking because I, I haven't heard anything that says they're, they're required at this point. But if the commission were to approve the four permits that are requested right now, that would say that the current configuration with only two parking spaces onsite would be accepted. And it would be part of the new CUP that would stay with the property. Is that correct?
Yep. So now they would have two CUPs, one to address the use that took place, um, the change in use that took place in, in ninety-five. And then this one, which is the expansion to what's now perceived to be, and a part of the code, not perceived. I'll take that back. It's a non-conforming use that's being expanded on.
Well, yeah, I mean, also I see another alternative too. Um, and I did still have a question on, uh, in terms of providing, uh, I mean, they do get visitors, so that's kind of what I'm thinking about. They are, they do have some visitors. And if there could be an additional space or two provided onsite, I think that that uh, probably their typical parking demand can be, be fairly well accommodated. And I just, I thought maybe, uh, Mark Whitman could, um, answer my earlier question about whether, do you think that there's room for an additional, um, compact space in the back? You know, that would parallel the, I, not, hopefully not interfere with the tru, the truck turnaround, but, but be able to be kind of squeezed in there with the other two spaces, or is that just not, is that just too tight?
No, um, the problem is, um, I, I think that that space could fit in there without a problem and, and there probably will be cars back there. But once we call it a new commercial parking space, then it, it's required to be a handicap space. And, um, and you can't have a handicap space in the back of the property.
Okay.
So having it, you know.
Yeah, okay. So anything that's formally identified as parking, it would have to be designed as a handicap space? Is that what you're saying? A third space?
Yeah.
We're talking about for the commercial aspect. I just want to be clear, not for the resident. We're talking about for the commercial aspect, I just want to be clear, not for the residential.
Yeah, just residential would not.
I see.
But it looks like informally, there's two or three parking spaces along the north side right now.
Right, right. Or or even space in the driveway on the south side. I mean, it would block the driveway, but.
At at the very back, at the very back of the lot, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's interesting too. And I know we can't use the street parking, but I, at least several times a week, I'm right going past their business. And I don't know if I've ever seen anyone parked in front on the street.
I, I, um, I know.
Yeah, and sometimes maybe I go by more, you know, three or four times a week. And I've, I don't know that I've ever seen a car out there or any vehicle, but I know.
My wife and I walk that block with about the same frequency, never seen anyone parked there.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think we can possibly, as Kathy, our commissioner of laws was saying, accommodate possibly an extra vehicle or two on the on the lot, the existing parcels and possibly not have to go to an offsite parking agreement, but we will get to that as we move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for either the owners or the architect? All right. Then finishing that that series of questions, is there, is there anyone else? James or or Sherry who wishes to speak on this that would require us doing more than just opening and then abruptly closing a public hearing?
There's no one in the queue.
Okay, well, I'll formally open the public hearing and then formally close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the commission for deliberation on the case. I I had a couple of comments on the resolution itself, but I think we need to make a couple of small corrections. I did have one other question for staff that I I forgot to bring up earlier. On the administrative report, page six, there's a table there, VMU basic development standards. And it says that the side setback is not consistent. Is it the side setback or is it the width of the driveway on the south side that is not consistent?
Well, it's actually, it's actually a combination of of both. But through the planned development permit, it allows for that flexibility. The way in which it allows for the flexibility for that to be actually wired. Here, it's identifying a width of basically ten feet as a maximum, but here you can see the building itself is is more than ten feet.
Right.
And that's really to allow for that access piece.
So it's just the requirement of for the two-way driveway that makes it a bigger requirement?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
We had, we were looking at a larger lot, we'd probably be looking at a wider drive aisle to allow for access to parking, but that's that's not necessarily the case here. It's a tight site.
Okay. Anyone have comments on the resolution itself, attachment A, the thirteen-page resolution? Kathy or Kathy or Jake or John?
I mean, I had, I had to think about adding the bike, but bike parking.
Oh, yes.
Now, what? Lucas, what, what is the requirement for bicycle parking in a commercial space? Is it like four or six or two or?
You know, that's interesting. I don't know that it, I was going to ask Lucas the same question. I don't know that it specifically calls out a number based on something like square footage or or.
Yeah, I mean, section ten two, fourteen, ten specifies bicycle parking requirements when provided. But it doesn't specify the number of slots that are required. It just identifies that the actual number and final design of the bicycle spaces are determined through the review authority. So if we're looking at that from a recommendation standpoint for for planning commission in terms of how that that reads and then city council for final determination.
Yeah, I I'm personally, I would think, you know, we could say like a minimum of two. Whereas, you know, if it's a restaurant or retail where you've got a lot more people coming in that, you know, we we may say something, or it's a lot, most of the time, we don't even say how many. But I would tend to say, you know, a minimum of two. If they wanted to do more, great, but you know, I know space is constricted. We're trying to find more space for a car.
Well, those could go in the space of a compact parking space at the back, too. If somebody's riding a bicycle, it's not like a handicap parking space where you can't have it in back. People that are riding bicycles are going to be able to walk back to the front of the building if they need to.
That's true. It's kind of nice and convenient in the front, but but yes, that could happen.
Chair Quillisi, there there is in the code an analogous requirement for bicycle parking in section nine dash thirteen, two oh three on nonresidential development standards. That specifically refers to development serving fifty or more in fifty or more. However, it does say that in 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 those cases, the the bike parking is four bicycles per fifty thousand square feet of nonresidential development.
Oh, thanks. That's good to know.
But that's.
Could you give me that section number again, ten two?
Nine dash thirteen, two oh three.
Hi. Thirteen, okay.
So that's refers to a different kind of development, nonresidential development, serving fifty employees or more. However, that is one place where the the code does talk about when when bike, bike, bike parking is required, so. I mean, but there's not fifty thousand square feet here, so.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lucas, did you, did you call out something else in this discussion about the bicycles?
Yeah, it's section ten dash two point fourteen, ten, which is titled bicycle parking requirements.
And that's the general develop, bicycle parking standards in the developmental operational standards. But that doesn't actually have, tell you how many parking spots. Yeah, the only one that really tells you where there's parking spots are are in that previous section and.
We don't need that requirement, yeah.
Yeah, where there's a metric. Though, of course, yeah, it's, this is far less than fifty thousand, so.
Okay.
But from a legal perspective, I'd say that if, you know, I, it would, might make sense to stay within that metric. And so if four corresponds to fifty thousand, but that is, that is just a a possibility that you you may consider.
Well, I I I feel something of a need to try to be consistent with the development that we're approving within the city and and a condition that that at least two parking, at least two bicycle parking spaces be provided somewhere onsite seems reasonable to me. Any thoughts from commissioners?
No, I I agree, Steve. I think that would be, I think we, I would like to see us do something to provides some means of visitor, visitors coming to the site and some accommodation for that in terms of the onsite parking, even though, albeit it may not be quite to what we typically provide, but I think in light of the.
Also a pretty light customer load.
A very light customer traffic. It's justified.
Okay.
And Steve, you had, did you say you had a couple of questions, revisions in the resolution?
Well, I, as I, as I read through the the attachment A, there 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 was some errata. And and I sent that to to Lucas earlier. It says TMP in several places where it should say TPM. And I don't, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but the resolution itself is a legal document. I think we we need to make it as accurate as we can.
Agreed.
That's on page one and page two, at least of the attachment A. On page five, there is in in the paragraph named section two, it says PD, it should say PDP, plan development permit. And I just, I had some other questions that went with that. For example, on page, is it? Page six, the public art paragraph. And I, if everyone's okay with it, I'd like to ask the the architect or the or the owners again. Is it true that the the public art requirement is proposed to be met by the building itself, by the the expansion building? Is that the idea here with tile and other things on the face of the building?
We, are we? We live?
Oh, are you asking us?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yeah, we wanted to use our tiles on the connecting, kind of like hallway between the existing studio and the new one. Kind of make it like a jewel box of floor to ceiling tiles and across, you know, on the stair risers and such.
I thought the elevation was quite attractive. But there there was a separate requirement for public art and I was wondering if you were proposing to fill it with that work?
With the tiles, yeah.
Okay.
In value, it exceeds.
And I had, I had some other questions for for Lucas in terms of making, making sense for me in the attach, in the the resolution itself. Page five, condition three. It says that the the applicant shall demonstrate compliance prior, compliance with the M Welo study, standards prior to the issuance of a building permit. And I don't see how they can do that. Kathy Nolan, can you?
Well.
You make sense of that for me? I just didn't understand.
Yeah, and actually, the the DRP, our landscape plans, are actually construction documents more than we normally need at this phase. So you can see if you read through the landscape package, the sheets, they've already.
You did.
M Welo. And so that needs to be turned in and it needs to be approved in order for the building permit to be.
Okay, but you're saying the landscaping plan is sufficient to demonstrate compliance?
Right, and normally within the DRP process, we know that and we, it's not always complete, but in this instance, the landscape architect has already done all the the M Welo information. And so the building department inspector will review all that and if they approve it, fine, but they do need to have that prior to issuing the building permit. And then they also need to do for that clause, a number three, an independent irrigation audit, find out a third party. But you can't do that until installation. And that's finished for the final approval for occupants here.
Also, so when when we're looking at, so let's say this moves forward and and is in plan check. All of these aspects are are double checked through plan check and we go through this pretty meticulously. Landscapers are certainly required to provide that they're meeting all of these standards, including certifying and and stamping those plans identifying that they've got, that they're meeting all the standards through through Welo.
Yeah, it was, it was the phrase demonstrate compliance that had me going. But if the if the plan itself is sufficient to demonstrate compliance, that's great. Page six, condition nine. I'm wondering, it says the final parcel map shall be recorded with Ventura County. Is that the responsibility of the owners, the architect, or does the city do that? It doesn't say in the condition.
Yeah, and that would be, that would be on the the applicant.
Okay.
Make sure that that is taken care of. So you're right, if we're looking at these conditions, it does need to specify the responsibility.
Uh, it's just, I I want to make sure if it's the, if it's the applicant's responsibility that they know that.
Yeah.
So we should add that to the condition just for clarification.
Right, clarification on the on condition nine.
I can, I can direct.
Let's just say recorded by the applicant with Ventura County?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the dates or?
Uh, there, well, there's, there's language later that talks about when the final parcel map or the tentative parcel map and then the final parcel map, when they have to be recorded. I don't remember exactly which paragraph it was. Condition eleven, it says the owner or applicants shall record covenants requiring the maintenance by successors in interest of the onsite stormwater treatment. What what sort of thing does that? Are there standard forms for these covenants?
Yes.
Clearly, it's a responsibility of the owner or applicant, but how do they fulfill that responsibility?
So they would, they would work with Public Works and with with community development to ensure that that is done and provided correctly because we have MS four requirements that have been placed on us by the state. And those, those are including any sort of development we're talking about, whether it's expansion or new build. So that would be, that would be necessary for what we're looking at here and addressing that at the plan check stage.
Okay. So.
Those are, those are documents in terms of of checking boxes. I mean, there's a lot of conditions that are that are folded in here. And a lot of the times, what ends up happening is when you're, when you're looking at at a map and this this happens to be a map where we're dissolving a line, there's, there's opportunity for conditions to address that map, to clean up that map, and then to address any sort of outstanding conditions. So for instance, the the covenants for the, you know, in compliance with MS four really is really what that boils down to. That is something that and actually even without a map, it would still be something that would be required as a part of the expansion or new build.
So when you, when you get to those things, applicants, go ask Lucas. But there are, there are conditions in here that are things that you're going to have to fulfill. For example, on page seven, condition fourteen, compliance with the lighting standard, the lighting ordinance, is this one again where a lighting plan is sufficient to demonstrate compliance?
Yes, and that's done, that's done during plan check. So we would be reviewing and and making sure that that lighting plan is is consistent with article sixteen point five.
I I recall when when we were looking at the Wild Tennis Academy, that there were some fairly complex lighting drawings. I didn't recall seeing any in this package. Were there any? And if not, then how do they demonstrate compliance?
So I'm noticing a trend here, Chair Quillisi. You're, the the phrase demonstrate compliance, is that the, is that the issue that you're having here?
I I'm wondering what that constitutes, yeah, what action does that?
So demonstrate compliance with, in terms of how this this is being phrased, is identifying a set of plans. Certainly, when the applicant, in this case, and even the architect, in terms of submitting plans, they'll probably have questions about these conditions. These conditions will be required to be placed as a separate sheet on the construction documents when they submit for plan check. So not only are we looking at these conditions today, and it's something that that city council will be considered, considering at a later date. If and when that's, that project is approved and we're looking at where those conditions live, they'll be living with the document itself. The plan check documents themselves or construction documents.
Okay, I I'm, I'm trying to bring out in discussion some assurance that the owners, applicants understand the full range of things that. Understand the full range of things that they're going to have to do. Uh, for example, in condition twenty, this is on page eight. I happen to be on the Ojai Valley Sanitary District Board as well as this commission. And so I spoke with the general manager about this. And I know that both the two oh four parcel and the two oh six parcel have current legal sewer laterals in place. And if you didn't notice on your property tax rolls. You're paying the standard fifty dollars a month or whatever it is for each parcel right now. For the sewer, if you decide that, that you. Only need one sewer to, to serve your expanded. Part, project here on the parcel, then the sewer district will require that you excavate and cap the other lateral. If you wish to use the other lateral, then you go ahead and you keep using them. But you will need to confer with the sewer district on that.
Totally, I also should, should mention at the very end of this resolution is a signature portion, there's a signature for the. The planning commission chair for myself, and then the, the applicant owner. Accepting the conditions of approval, so as we transition here. If the applicant or even the architect have questions, certainly, I think that's with any resolution. Because any resolution that, that comes before the, the, um, planning commission has this signature piece at the very end of the resolution. To ensure that they've read, understand. What they're, what they're buying into.
As always, understand what you're signing, yes, okay. I think that's about the end of. The end of my questions. And that having, that having been said as part of our discussion, I guess, I like the project. I, I, I enjoy walking by that house that, I, I call it the hobbit house. Uh, which is probably in an incorrect reference, but it's a charming little corner of Ojai. And the fact that you're carrying that design into the expansion, I think is very nice. I, I have no problems with, with any of the asks for what amounts to variances from code right now for the driveway or for the parking. And so I'm, I'm inclined to go with it right now and say, God be with you and have a good time doing the expansion. But I'd like to hear from the rest of the commissioners as well. Commissioner Nolan?
Um, well, as I mentioned earlier, I would like to add the minimum of two spaces for bike parking.
I think that's a good idea.
Right, and then, um, of course, we've been includes, including the errata that you pointed out. You know, any of the changes we just went over. And. I know we, we've discussed potentially one to two additional parking areas, and I'm not sure how we, you know, it's something we would just identify it, or does it have to be marked out? And I'm kind of referring to what Commissioner Lottis was talking about, potentially one, like a compact in the back, potentially one on the north side. Do, I don't know that, that it needs to be marked like a parking space, but just to know that it's there.
I, I think what I heard was that if it's marked, then we have to have a handicap space.
Exactly, so that would be, then be my only changes are the, you know, adding the bike parking and then of course, the, the errata that we went through.
Okay.
And otherwise, and then adding the, also the one on. Number nine, the final parcel map. Saying recorded with the applicant.
By the applicant with Ventura County, yeah.
Just for further clarification.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis?
Um, you know, I, I would be, I would suggest maybe adding a condition that. Calls out just that we could say something to the effect, this would be a new condition. Temporary parking for visitors shall be provided in either the driveway on the north side or the south side of the property. But.
But it doesn't have to be.
Unmarked, I just temporary parking, so I don't know if we need to say unmarked, but just, just something that says we recognize. That there can be additional visitor parking on the site.
Just want to remind the, remind the commission that any sort of parking onsite that's beyond the residential. That first base, whether it's marked, I mean, maybe crafting the condition so it's not as specific as saying.
Right.
That there is a dedicated space on there, on that site.
That's right, I was trying, I was trying not to say, to, to, yeah, if you can, if you could craft something.
I'll be creative with that language, so it's not as, as specific about marking it, but saying maybe available, I don't know, I'll work with that language.
I thought maybe.
Be careful, because I've got to, I'm going to have to work with the building official on that to ensure that it's not triggering the, the parking requirement.
Okay.
Specific conversation with him about that yesterday.
So might be in, might not, yeah.
Um, and do we, do we need a condition that, that says something about the public art? The public art project should, can, can. Can include RTK tiles as the.
I would stay, I would stay away from the Arts Commission conditions, they're, they're being, they're, they're going to have to go through that process separately.
Okay.
They're, they're going to have a hearing on this project?
On the art for the project, yes.
On, on the public art aspect of the project, yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Trent?
Um, I like the project as well, um, I like the. Romantic English cottage feel of the, of the proposal. Uh, the continuity with the current building and with the neighborhood, I think it adds to kind of Ojai's eccentric nature, the quirkiness of it. I was kind of talking to Luke about that, um, I like the idea of putting the second story on the south side, I think that, you know, it, it helps. Helps blend in more with the existing building that's there, the other two-story building that's there. Um, I don't really have too much of an issue with parking, knowing that, you know, the business isn't going to require a whole lot of folks visiting it. You know, I do like the idea of bikes, though, I think maybe a bike, some sort of bike parking in front or something like that, just in case. But.
At a location of the owner's choosing.
Yeah, exactly, you know, just, just something I think would be good. But other than that, I think it's a, I think it'll be, it'll be nice, it'll be a, a nice addition to that part of the town.
Uh, Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, again, I, I agree with everybody, I, I like the design. The only thing that kind of stood up to me just as a recommendation for the applicants would be on page eight and number nineteen, all the utilities being underground. Um, looking at, when I drove by today, the overhead Edison lines terminate and end at a pole on Arc's property. So depending, and I know this is going to be on the plans, on the construction, but depending on what the additional electrical load would be. If they have to upsize their service to feed the, this new addition. Um, there might be some, uh, you know, demolition of that concrete on the sidewalk. Um, to run a new line to that power pole underground to, to the overall project, so I just thought I'd throw it out there for Mark. If he's still here, just to keep an eye on that with Edison to, you know, maybe plan ahead and get them out there ahead of time.
Uh, I, I noticed that going by as well, it's right at the northwest corner of the property or the. Southwest corner of a piece of the arc property, but it looks like the utilities go underground right at that pole. And so I presumed that the utilities that serve the current two oh four and two oh six. Uh, structures are part of that underground thing, and maybe Mr. Whitman knows, or maybe the owners know, I, do you know what? Do you know what? The state of your utility, your electric and gas utilities, if, if you have gas, I presume you do with a kiln. Is that all underground at the moment?
They're all underground, uh, we will not be increasing any energy load, um, our kilns run on electricity, so. That stays the same, nothing changes and.
Heading lights in the warehouse.
Yeah, just a warehouse, yeah.
Yeah, and, and our, our, our panel that we were basically asked to put in, helped us put it that way years ago. Is the same one that ran, runs that entire industrial park on, uh, on Bryant Street. Um, just for our, just for our place, it was just something that.
It's more than we need.
That that was a good idea, that we spent like, you know. Tens of thousands of dollars to put in this thing that would basically give electricity to the entire block. So it's there, it's there to tap into, and it's underground from out in front.
Yeah.
Electrical contracting specialist. So. You can expect questions from him in that area. Um, okay, any other, any other discussion by the commission?
I, I just would like to, um, say that I commend the applicants for their. For this well-designed, very aesthetically appealing project, and in particular. For the landscape plan to plant a valley oak in the backyard, is that, that is what's being proposed, right? Fantastic. Thank you very much, it's a, yeah, it's a, design-wise, it's a great project, beautiful.
Then I think it's an appropriate time for a motion of some sort, I think perhaps to approve with the errata. And the additional changes to conditions that we have discussed here this evening.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, that the planning commission, that we adopt a resolution.
Twenty dash ten.
Twenty dash ten. Um, with the changes as we just went through, um, including adding the bike parking. And then that we make the recommendation to City Council, do I need to make, do that as two separate motions or it going to be one? Compact with, or include the approval for the, the DRP and then the recommendation, Lucas, is that appropriate?
Well, the whole, the whole project is moving forward to.
Right. City Council.
It's not necessarily that the planning commission is approving one item.
Okay.
It's a recommendation of the entire project to move forward.
All right, I just wanted to be clear on that, um, so I, you know, I make the recommendation that, uh, we approve the project, uh, to move forward to City Council. Um, and that would include, um, DRP twenty dash zero zero one, the tentative parcel map, uh, TMP twenty dash zero zero one. Plan Development Permit, PDP twenty dash zero zero one, and the conditional use permit, CUP twenty dash zero zero three.
Second, I did I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, very good, any more discussion? Sherry, could we have a, a roll call, please?
Chair Colossi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan? Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Terrific, uh, so, so you've gotten past this hurdle, there's still a ways to go, but we all wish you well with the project.
Great project, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number three. More Title Ten. Lucas, would you take us through that, please?
It's, it's the good work we're doing here with this Title Ten in terms of some of the errata stuff. Good evening commissioners, once again, uh, the item you have before discussion tonight, there is no, um, vote being taken, but we're simply just reviewing this. This matter is approximately sixty-eight sections of the, of Title Ten as a part of cleanup and errata. Uh, and this is actually adding on to some sections that we had reviewed. Shoot, I want to say it was probably over a month ago now.
November fourth, yes.
Yeah, uh, when we looked at this last time, um, we've since doubled that, that number. Um, and what I'm looking for tonight is a couple of things, one is if the commission has any questions of any of these sections. Um, we could certainly go through those, within each of these sections, there is actually areas that are highlighted in yellow. And those areas that are highlighted in yellow have either questions tied to them, comments tied to them. And, and they can either be discussed or simply just omitted, and it's kind of thanks for playing, but no thank you type of scenario. So. With that, if the, if the commission has any, any questions or they want to go over any specific sections, I think for the fact that we have sixty-eight sections. To, um, that we've, that we're looking at here tonight, I don't want to necessarily go through page by page. But if there's areas that you want to talk, talk through, and then potentially those are areas that end up getting into that kind of deeper dive, if you will. Um, and then end up getting tabled for a further discussion, so. Anyway, with that, if the commission has any questions.
Commissioners, Commissioner Nolan, please.
Yeah, I, um, let me just double check, because I know I, I tagged some pages here, just want to make sure I didn't miss one before this. So Attachment A, page ten of sixty, up at the top zoning regulations with the. Permits administration, variances and time extension. The next item we have highlighted in yellow, and it says this section doesn't mention asking the director for an extension. Uh, which seems to apply to all development projects, not just planned development projects. Says the director can grant a twelve-month extension, I don't, I felt like that was a little unclear and I, we may need to dis- that and sort that one out.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate to a deeper dive and when this goes, if, if we approve this as. If we approve recommending this as a text amendment, I would presume that that bracketed statement would not appear, but we'll come back to it.
Okay, so, and that may be the case in some of these. Are, are, so we're in agreement that that's a deeper dive?
Yeah, because I think there's actually more sections that we would, we would probably lump that together, I mean, you can be lumping together in some other sections that. That have maybe some distinctions between twelve months versus six months.
I had a feeling that's.
Right, agree.
Actually, we've talked about that at one point. And then maybe clumping those together and kind of having that kind of deeper dive discussion in terms of six months versus twelve months. And maybe looking at some examples of where that's, that's applied, just so that we're all on the same page.
So, um, at the bottom of that same page, page ten, last paragraph, it's, um, upon receipt and proper form of an amendment, application upon initiation by the director. Blah, 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 following department review and compliance with the city SEQA guidelines, I remember, I can remember it was our last session, maybe the one before. We said, oh, does the city have its own SEQA, and we said no, but basically we're referring to the state, correct?
Yeah.
So would we then strike city there, cities? We just say SEQA, referring to the California Environmental Quality Act or?
Yeah, before, before I respond to that, I want to just give some context.
Okay, good.
I'm currently working on putting together city guidelines. SEQA guidelines, so that we have them for future. So I don't necessarily want to look at having that completely omitted. The work that's already being done kind of in the background right now.
Okay, that, that answers that for me.
Sounds, sounds like, uh. You, you can leave the phrase there, maybe we put something back in the definitions section. That synopsizes or incorporates by reference the state law, I don't know, is that the kind of the direction you're going?
And if you have a city guideline, you potentially may have. You know, a, a title for that.
Yeah, that, that occurs in several places in here.
Yeah.
A- along with cities' environmental review procedures, which I think is.
Right.
It's related, but it's equally undefined at the moment in the code.
Good. Um, I have just a couple more on Attachment A, page twelve of sixty, right in the middle of the page. It's chapter, chapter two zoning regulations, and then the first item A. The, um, right at the end of the last sentence, it says, uh, the commission shall make a written recommendation to the council. That it approves conditionally approves, I think that second approves is a strike, I think it was just an, an error. Or disapproves the application.
I, I think, I think we need a couple of commas in there. We can approve.
Yeah.
As it stands, we could conditionally approve.
Maybe that's what it is, okay.
Or we could disapprove, so I think we need.
Yeah.
A comma after each of the. Um, a comma after each of the approves.
There you go. Okay, that answered it.
What, what page is that Kathy?
That's. Attachment A, twelve of sixty. Item A under chapter two zoning regulation and it was the, just right at the end of the sentence.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Comma, because otherwise it sounded like there was too many um, uh, approves in there.
Right. Looked like a run-on sentence or something, yeah.
Right. And then also on page fourteen, I have the same question about the CEQA, but that pretty much. And um.
Yeah.
All right, well, let somebody else take it from there. I don't want to.
Well, it's quite all right. I think, I think uh, Lucas has gotten the message. We need, we need at some point to clarify what city's CEQA guidelines are.
Right.
And what cities' environmental review procedures are.
Right.
We'll come back to it when staff is ready.
Yeah, and I think the clarification is really in the writ, the written component of that, in terms of having something, something written. That'll, that'll help clarify that.
And the commission can always recommend an amendment, uh, a specific amendment to the zoning code to be adopted by council if, if we can agree on um, the city CEQA guidelines and incorporate that in there.
Right.
So.
Right. Okay. Anyone else with, with specific things you'd like to call out? I think it's a good idea not to go through sixty pages, but pick out the things that appealed to you as needed to be done. Uh, Commissioner Lottis?
Oh, just continuing uh, behind Kathy, page fifteen of sixty. Uh, the land use permits and administration public hearings, article twenty-nine. Uh, let's see, subsection E, it has a list of projects that would be transmitted to council for final action. And I'm not sure this is totally complete, but I, I think at least under four, number four, it should be tentative track maps and parcel maps. And possibly law line adjustments. I mean, I, I think there's some, uh, staff might want to want to check to make sure that this is a fairly complete list, but I think.
Yeah. I can look at that again.
And we may need to add even the, even the thing that we did tonight. The PDP, what, what, what does it stand? Development permit, yeah.
In certain cases, the planned development permit does go before city council. Um, it remains at the planning commission level unless called up by city council.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But yeah, you're correct. Uh, in terms of parcel maps, I think it's, it's important to note that the planning commission acts as an advisory to city councils and providing that, that recommendation that then is forwarded on to city council.
Anyway, since we call out uh, specific items, I, I just thought, well, we might want to.
Yeah, might add, might as well add a couple to the list.
Complete.
Making complete, you know.
And um, well, that's the whole deeper dive thing on the next page, page sixteen. You know, my favorite topic, the director exemption appeal. You know, why do we always, why do I always keep coming back to this? But um, whatever we do on the director exemption should end up being codified. And it should, it, we need to put it in here and if you want my opinion, the direct, the appeal of the director exemption should be exactly the same as every other appeal, which is means anybody can file an appeal within fifteen days. And following the fifteen days, you set up your public hearing. And there's no intermediate, there should not be any intermediate meetings. Um, special hearings or what, special meetings or whatever. And um, so that's enough of that. Um, let's see.
I think I, maybe we should close out the topic if we can right here. I think the, the city policy right now, which was approved, I presume, if not explicitly voted on by city council, was that you have to have a meeting on an appeal within fifteen days.
Right, but what I'm saying is that, but that's a policy. It's not, I mean.
Well, I, I.
I'm not sure how challengeable that is.
Yeah, maybe Nikhil can tell us what the precedence of these various documents is.
So you can ask, I mean, the policy can be changed. The policy can be changed, probably not during a mid-process, but it, it can be changed. If the commission has a recommendation to change a certain policy, it, it can do so. The, it's, it's not codified and if you want to codify it as to the specific appeal process, that's also something that the commission can recommend council to do.
Understood.
Yeah.
It's something the council has to do. Uh, the other thing I wanted to clarify, and I had a discussion with Lucas on this earlier. Uh, that fifteen day thing. If, if you have to, if, if the requirement right now, whether it's policy or code, to have a meeting on an appeal within fifteen days. Uh, if the appeal is to either the commission or the council, that's a Brown Act body. And you have a minimum of twenty-four hours that you have to back up to notice that meeting. So the fifteen days for a meeting is really fourteen days for the appeal so that the notice can go in.
Right. So I'm, I'm saying, and I, I may be in the minority, but you know, normally there's an appeal period, fifteen days. Anybody can appeal it within fifteen days. It would take two commissioners to file an appeal with Lucas via email. And if two commissioners appeal it, i- i- it's, it goes to our next public hearing, just like it does for any other appeal. And it's much more expeditious and you don't have to mess around with special meetings and the timing and noticing or anything like that. You just do it like you regularly do any appeal. It's very straightforward and very clear. And I just cannot understand why the director exemption appeal is different from every other kind of appeal. And convoluted on top of it.
The, the only reason I can think of is that another legal phrase, I think when you have a director's exemption, getting the project started, time is of the essence. You'll recognize that phrase, but I don't know if it, if it is or should be different from any other sort of appeal. I think that's probably a useful discussion for us to have and make a recommendation to city council if we choose.
Agreed. And, and it is the deeper dive aspect. It's not for tonight, so.
Yeah.
I was just, I was just touching on it that that's, that's, that's.
Still a sore point.
Should be codified. Uh, I don't, let me see, let me just look really quickly if I had anything. I didn't have a lot tonight. I did like your comment on the manufactured animal food that page twenty-nine, I did agree that should be, we should incorporate that.
Well, you circulated my letter, Lucas.
Oh, yeah, there, it's, it's a comment that's written, it's um.
No, you're talking about.
Page twenty-nine.
The, the highlighted comment, okay.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, once again, that's something that we need to discuss at more length. And I would presume that a text amendment would go forward without that bracketed comment. And then we'll come back to it.
Yeah.
And then uh, well, page thirty-five, I just noted, you were talking about doing a definition for a mitigated negative declaration. Um, and I then later I noticed we had a definition for um, negative declaration.
Right. I think similar language would work there.
Yeah, so that, I was, initially I was just going to say, oh, just refer to CEQA, but um, but we could prob, but we could come up with a definition, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, I would almost say maybe it does make sense to reference CEQA because if that definition changes to CEQA.
CEQA is the defining authority on this.
The mitigated neg-dec and the uh, negative, negative declaration are already defined in the CEQA regulations. Um, I think Lucas is correct that we don't want to stray because they do change the definition language all the time and further define terms. And so I would perhaps it would be best to add a cross-reference to CEQA or say that as um, in the, when, when you're defining that, say as, as defined by, and then put in the CEQA uh, section rather than us defining it ourselves.
I, I completely agree with you, Nikhil.
That, that would be a definition on page thirty-five and then again on page thirty-six, the negative declaration. So Lu- Lucas, can you take care of that?
Yep.
And then I think I had a question, page thirty-nine. Um, talking about a proposed, the definition of a proposed project. And the way we have it defined, it says that a proposed project is a proposed new structure. New addition to an existing structure or area of other new site development. We're adding or a proposed new use of an existing parcel or structure. But then it goes on to say, and this is existing language. Um, these do not include the alteration of any portion of an existing structure other than an addition. And I, I, I question whether that's really a correct thing to be saying because.
That's why there's a highlighted question there.
Right, what about?
Yeah, hold on just a moment. Uh.
Okay.
Mr. Haney, you had a.
You had a comment. I just wanted to say, uh, um, I have to leave the meeting and I just wanted to, to say thank you guys again for all you do and and I, I appreciate the deliberation and, and uh, um, especially moving um, the first project forward. I think, uh, again, I concur. That's, that's just going to intensify the beautification of our community. Just a stunning building. And, and uh, just something that's just going to better our community. So thank you guys.
Super. Thank you, Randy. Okay, so that was pages thirty-five, thirty-six and you were on thirty-nine.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could, the alteration of any portion of the, of an existing structure, whether it's demolition or some other alteration would be, would in fact be part of a proposed project. I think.
It ought to be. It's, I mean, the plain language would, you would think so.
I don't think it's an, an exception, so I just um.
Like a clarification.
Yeah.
And I agree with you. Um, well, whether it's an alteration or you're building a whole new structure, it is a project.
Right. So we might want to.
Make it a little.
Re-review that with staff.
Okay.
Let's take a, take a dive, a deep dive on that one, Lucas.
All right.
Okay, I'll stop for the time being. Let John or Jake.
Yeah, John or Jake, you have some that you want to call out here and get some clarification?
Yeah, I got um, page two and three. I'll try to keep it quick. It's, it's not as much errata, but it, it kind of goes back to the Hakane sushi review as, you know, like the whole dark sky stuff. I still, there's still, like, if you search in, on our code, dark sky does not exist as like a search query. So I think there's a lot of confusion as what is dark sky, what is not? What can and can't we use? Because clearly landscape lighting, I believe it should be a recommendation to council that we exempt landscape lighting from adhering to dark sky. Because ninety percent of landscape lighting points straight up. And if you do have a sign or a monument, you're going to end up lighting it from the ground and it's going to be shining up. Um, so I just, it's not necessarily errata, but the, you know, I, I think this whole exterior lighting thing could be kind of revamped and discussed and try to maybe loosen, loosen the reins a little bit. Um, or, or if not, put the, the word dark sky in here because like I mentioned before, I mean, uh, the inspection department, they're, they're using the term dark sky. And they're looking at the box with the fixture and if it doesn't say dark sky, they fail it. So now we have, we have an issue between what our errata says, what the inspectors are calling. And we don't have dark sky noted in our codes.
Not a formal part of the code, so how can you comply with it?
Exactly. Um, and then on that, um, let's see, like page three down low, residential entrance light or porch light shall mean lighting of low lumen intensity installed above or near front, back or side entrance. Uh, low lumen light is a light of no more than four hundred and fifty lumens, which is equivalent to a forty watt incandescent, nine or thirteen compact fluorescent, stuff like that. Sometimes that's hard to achieve because a lot of the new fixtures have integrated LED lights built into them and you're not able to sometimes control the lumen output of these new fixtures nowadays. So I just didn't know if this is something that we actually need or if we can increase that lumen output at all. I don't know if the inspectors even know this exists. I don't know if they're even calling it. So, you know, just a little bit of stuff like this, I think there's a lot of um, disconnect between what's happening in the field and what, what's actually written down.
Commissioner Colisi?
Yes, ma'am.
Comment, I agree with um, Commissioner Swift and this is probably a deeper dive. Um, but it's interesting, um, you know, we're talking about like sign lighting. I actually walked around town and drove around and looked at all these commercial sites and I'm going, okay, what are the people doing if you're trying to do dark sky friendly? And if it's not signage on a wall, it's hard to downlighting. There's, there's a lot of little nuances. And not to take up a lot of time on it, but I think at some point we should do a deep dive and just kind of review it and maybe we need to do some clarification on definitions. Maybe we need to have some charts in there or references, just to make it a little more clear. Actually, a lot more clear. The light switch on, so to speak. I, I think it's a good idea. Uh, but I want to say thank you, uh, Commissioner Swift for bringing that up because I, I'm in agreement that some of it needs to be looked at.
This is your area of expertise, Jake. Uh, I would like to suggest, if you're willing to take on the task, that, that we come back to ten dot two dash, ten dash two dot sixteen point five, the exterior lighting standards.
Right.
But you, you take a, a deep look at it and come back and when we, when we have the time to cover that, that you kind of leave the discussion because you know more about this clearly than I do. Uh, probably the other commissioners as well. And um, and if we're going to bring the code up to something that makes sense currently.
Sure.
This would be a good way to do it.
I, I'd be happy and be honored to do that.
Okay.
I, I have, just have a question, Commissioner Swift. So um, when, when you were talking about the light bulbs that are available, so is it? What I, what I couldn't decide was, was I hearing you saying, are the manufacturers just not up to speed on dark spy? A dark sky or being aware of it or promoting dark sky? What's, I mean, is there?
It's, I'd say ninety percent of all outdoor fixtures are not dark sky compliant because it's not, it's not a national requirement. It's, I don't even know if it's a, it's not even a state requirement.
Okay.
So it's extremely hard to find dark sky compliant fixtures. Um, you know, and then like on page two midway down, letter H, to allow for flexibility in the style of lighting fixtures. So if you have to comply with dark sky, there's no flexibility.
Pretty limited.
Yeah, and it makes it really difficult for somebody that wants to build a, you know, like do the remodel that we just talked about this morning, like they might not find these decorative lights that they really want to use that are dark sky compliant, so I'm guilty of it. You end up buying a cheap fixture that's dark sky. You get final inspection, they leave, you change it out and you put a non-dark sky fixture. So I think at the end of the day, most of these fixtures that get approved, yeah, they're dark sky, but three days later, there's no dark sky, you know, nobody's dark sky. Because they can't find the fixture they like to match their house.
Well, and if there's nothing in the local or the state code that says this is what means dark sky, it becomes doubly difficult.
Correct. I mean, there are.
And the inspector shouldn't be looking for that phrase.
Yeah. You mentioned there is a dark sky organization. You can go on there and I've done that. And they've got a, a printout of um, you know, hand-drawn fixtures, you know, one side it has a big X, like don't do these on the other side. So basically that the whole concept is. So basically that the whole concept is you want the fixture to be down. Shrouded, so none of the bulb is showing and or a combination of a shroud and. Um, like an opaque, uh, glass, if it's like a porch light, for instance.
Yeah, no light spilling onto adjacent properties.
And you'll find more of the dark sky when you're doing, uh, maybe even like parking, um, lot. Lighting as opposed to what you would call like low voltage LED, um, or just like landscape lighting. Which is like a lower watt.
Right, so I, I think those are some really good comments, I'll, I'll work with Commissioner Swift and, and we'll come up with something.
Great, yeah, I, it, it seems like a catch twenty-two if we have inspectors looking for the phrase dark sky. But it's not in any legislation anywhere.
Right.
And that's, that's kinda dangerous.
And some other communities that have adopted, um, similar, you know, I think like, you know, Montecito has, of course, the county actually has. For the unincorporated area, the Ojai Valley. Um, I know solving has, I've done a project there years ago and we had to do dark sky friendly. So, you know, we might wanna go and look at some other local community, they, they may have some other additional things. In their ordinance that we might wanna look at, like a chart or something, um, or definitions. You don't have to completely reinvent the wheel, but, uh, you know, it's good to use, um, as a reference.
And, and commission could, I mean, if you wanted to do a deeper dive on this, you could recommend that staff come back with a report. Uh, to, um, amend or update article sixteen point five of the exterior lighting standards. The ordinance is from September twenty-eighth tw- two thousand thirteen.
Right.
So things may or may not have changed since then, I think as Commissioner Swift said that. If our ordinance is not necessarily current with the current techno- technology or the current. Um, design standards or current, I guess, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not familiar with the, uh, with the area. But as, you know, you, you, I think, I think you guys know what I mean, so that would be, I mean, as part of this, or you could bring it as a standalone. And say that this is, and then you could simply rename exterior lighting standards and then in the very first purpose of the. In the very first, in the preamble and the general purpose section, simply say that this ordinance shall be known as the dark skies ordinance. And that would be, that would then go and, that'd be codified and go into the text.
The, the other thing that I'd like to suggest is in, in an area like this where the technology is changing relatively rapidly. It may be that we wanna go with descriptions of the functions that we want to achieve.
Right.
Rather than technical specifications which are gonna change every year. You don't want light up into the sky, you don't want light spilling onto adjacent properties, things of that sort. That, that don't say you have to have a certain size bulb or technology. Like, and, and Jake, you and, you and Lucas will straighten it out.
Got it. And, and, uh, yeah, especially on the actual technical standards because we incorporate the building code and. Um, various state codes by reference, we don't need to go for, further and define them, we can just define the use.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
Are there other, other things you wanted to pull out, Jake or John? Okay, well, I'll, I'll try a couple. Uh, I did, I did give, uh, Lucas some RADA page. Twenty. And this was, um. The next to the last paragraph on page twenty, it's, uh, ten two thirty-five oh nine B one. I think, uh, we should say in violation of, not with. Page twenty-five. Well, that says that we're gonna have to take, take some other changes into account once we have changed from child daycare to child and adult daycare. That, that, uh, ripples back through the land use tables and, and such as that as well and probably some other sections. Let me see, page thirty. No, that was the, uh, city's master environmental assessment. I don't think we have one of those either, so we're gonna have to, this is in, um. Ten two thirty-six oh two F.
On page thirty?
F six, it's page thirty.
Okay.
And it's. F six, six up toward the top there. Where it says forests, in the definition of forests, it talks about the city's most current master. Environmental assessment, that's one more of those that sounds authoritative but isn't defined anywhere. So I think we need to come back and, and do a dive on that one. Or, or maybe staff has a, a good idea of what we ought to cite to, uh, what that means.
Good catch, Steve, that's, uh.
That is a good one.
Really a detailed thing right in there, stuck in there, I didn't even see that.
Yeah, I, I, I worry about, about a citizen coming a, a cropper with, with a paragraph that. That doesn't have meaning right now and not understanding what they need to do or not do.
Right.
Uh, page thirty-three. L, is it L? Eligible projects. L three? No. Uh, is it I three? It is I three, it's up toward the top. Uh, the third line down from the top, the benefit offered by the city to encourage construction of eligible projects. Um, once again, we don't know what that means, I presume this will go forward, that's a yellow highlighted. But it's something we need to come back to.
Yeah, actually, I think a reference would probably suffice there, I have a pretty good idea of what the incentive is referencing. But I wanna, I wanna make sure that it's, it's consistent, I have a feeling that it's referencing, um, affordable.
Yeah, affordable housing, a density bonus and comprehensive sign program. All have, all have the word incentive in them, so whichever is there.
Yeah.
You could, you could change.
Sign program has incentive baked into, baked into the, to code currently, huh?
Right, and, and the paragraph we're talking about here is definition of incentives, so.
Yeah.
If it, if it can be modified to, to discuss that, I think that would be good.
Okay.
Uh, page, then page forty-five. Another one of these highlighted questions, this is, um, item twenty-four supermarket. What do you call a similar, something that looks like a supermarket but it has less than two million dollar gross annual sales? Uh, does make sense, if we just left the figure out and, and say a supermarket is. A self-service, self, or full-service, self-service retail store. Which sells a line of dry grocery, canned goods, et cetera.
Right.
I think that would, that would suffice and we can not worry about a number in there.
Agreed.
Right, because we may have a smaller supermarket.
Oh, we got Joe's, is that a supermarket? Well, not really, but it's kind of a convenience store, but.
To, to the Westridge that's on the corner of O Avenue. You know, and one, just due to the sheer size, probably has a bigger volume of revenue, but they're both. I guess you would call them a supermarket because they've got a wide variety of selection.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't seem necessary to me to define two large and small supermarkets, they're just supermarkets, they have a function.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think, I think supermarkets. Do have a definition of a certain size, like in general.
Well, they do right now in the code.
Cuz you couldn't, you couldn't call Westridge a supermarket by definition cuz only like Avon's, Ralph's. Those large chains are only supermarkets because of their size, everything else is a grocery store or something like that, so.
Just a market?
We have, we have a, yeah, maybe we have another definition somewhere.
Um, the only definition is in ten two three six oh two.
Of supermarket, yes. Is there, it, but I, I don't have, uh, thirty-six oh two open right now. Is market or grocery store in there somewhere?
So supermarket is defined as a full-service, self-service, self, self-service retail store with gross annual sales. Of two million, um. Dollar, and then grocery, um, I believe, I may, may be mistaken. But grocery, a grocery store is defined in, in, uh, in title five sanitation and health.
Oh, it's, it's also in thirty-six oh two. Says retail business where the majority of the floor area opened to the public is occupied by food products. Packaged for preparation and consumption away from the site of the store. Okay, maybe we don't need to change to the supermarket definition. And I'm wondering, do we have market?
Yeah, we would, should.
And is that dollar amount, is that an old number or is that recent?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's an old number.
That's probably an old number.
And market, market is not in the definitions.
No. Yeah, grocery store is, and that's actually in the definitions in the sanitation and health when we did our single use carry out bag ordinance.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But also, it's also in ten two.
Yes, yeah.
It's interesting that they're in two different locations, correct, the definitions or the. I mean, essentially they're almost doing the same thing, one just has, is a smaller and does a lesser volume of sales.
But, yeah, different intensity.
Different intensity, yeah.
But as. As it applies to us, I mean, supermarket is actually not defined, um. In the, um, when we get to, um. Oh, I just had it up here, oh, here we go, um, supermarket is actually not defined in our commercial and manufacturing land use and permit requirements. They actually use the term grocery, which is a permitted use in the C one zone.
And, and that is in the definitions in thirty-six oh two.
Yes.
Okay, um, beyond that, there were, there were some instances from page forty-eight to page sixty. Where, um, we need to add section titles. After section references, and I've given those to, to, uh, Lucas.
I see, uh.
So, one of those global changes that we made other places, but these are sections that we hadn't gotten to. Looking at that for those global changes.
And.
Does anyone have any other things they wanna bring up in this, in this sixty pages? Okay, Lucas, you have what guidance you need from the commission? Great, alright, let's move on to item four, tentative agenda. Um, next meeting is January sixth. And, uh, Lucas and I had mentioned this. Uh, and I asked, I asked Gail Davis about it cuz she's in charge of schedules of this sort. But it is traditional and I think we need to, the first meeting in January. Restart our election of chair and vice chair for the commission.
So we're not going to do the May one?
Well, but.
Discuss that because of the.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, remember we used to like, December, we used to go January to December and then because I, based on the fiscal.
Yeah, we just elected Steve in May, I thought it was, I thought we discussed it before the year.
I was, I was re-elected, I think in September or October. It, it was as soon as, as John and Jake were, were both on the commission.
Right.
Right.
Um, but I don't know if that was a carryover from January or if it was a carryover from May.
I believe it was May because the actual, a couple of years ago, the cycle got changed to start like in June. Rather than January.
Yeah, I know that.
For your terms actually had to stay on extra, you know, uh, January, February, March, April and May because of that shift.
Right, I know that's when the terms expire, I wasn't sure about the, about chair and vice chair, uh, terms.
Here was May that we voted, but, but I could be wrong.
Lucas, maybe you could check with, with Gail Davis and.
Yep.
Let us know if that's something we need to do or if it doesn't have to be done till May.
Yep, I'll follow up with that. Um, in terms of January, I know we have a concept review that's gonna be coming before you. We just got, um, word that we can start moving forward, well, I just got word that we can start moving forward on it. Um, when I say I, I've looked at it and it's ready for, that's really what it boils down to. Uh, and then, um, there's title ten.
What's the concept review for?
Uh, Westland Church, they're, they're proposing to do some modifications to the exterior of that building. Uh, where is that?
This is the one way out on the east end?
No, no, it's, it's, and it's, um, internalized, it's within kind of the central campus. I wanna say it's actually just a block or two from here, from City Hall. If that's the one I'm thinking.
Oh, the Wesleyan Church, oh, okay.
Say it right?
Wesleyan, Wesleyan, yeah. I miss her.
Okay, thank you, um, so that's, that's scheduled for the sixth, you'll be seeing that, we'll definitely have a meeting on the sixth. Um, and then for the twentieth, I know we, it's identifying title ten, I think that's kind of a staple right now.
Right.
And, um.
That and general plan update, updates.
Yes, obviously the general plan update stuff, and there is some stuff that's, that's going on right now that all. I think it was updated at council last night, but all of this commission know as well. But first, let me talk about the other item and then we talk about general plan and that, there'll be more updates for that. Um, four oh six East Topa Topa Street, they're proposing a, um. An expansion to the rear and there's some challenges that they have there. And it's not something that I, that the director can move forward with, it's gonna be something that, that's gonna require.
That's where the car wash is?
Just to the west of it, yes, there's a single family residence there.
Okay.
On the north side of Topa Topa.
Yeah.
So, that one you'll, you'll be seeing, I think we'll have that buttoned up and ready to go by the twentieth. Um, so, in terms of the, well, I'll, I'll hold off on general plan update. But expect that on the sixth and on the, on the twentieth as well. That, um, there'll either be some sort of a, um, me telling you or identifying from staff standpoint. Where we're at with the general plan or something in writing as a, you know, in terms of like a report or something. So expect either one with each of these meetings and sometimes there may not necessarily be anything. We may kind of be in a holding pattern as, as, uh, the consultants continue to work on it.
Okay.
But, okay, so that's the agendas. Um, wanted to make one note, um, the surveys. That have been ongoing since the beginning of, uh, beginning of October are set to basically. Um, end at the end of this week, so if you, your friends haven't signed up and done the surveys for the, for the general plan update. At this point and have gone to the website to do that general plan update, um, survey, I encourage them to do that. If the commission has not done that at this point, I encourage you to go online and, um, just do that survey real quick. That way we can, we're, we're getting some good information out there to kind of get the ground running.
That's link, link on the city website to that?
Yes, it's through our, I think it's, um.
Go to some survey monkey thing?
It is survey monkey. Sorry, I didn't have, I had it up and now I've gotta, let me pull it up here again.
I'm sure we can all find it.
Yeah, I've seen it.
You've seen it? Okay, good. And then, um.
Oh, sorry.
I'll wait till, till Lucas is done.
There is, there's gonna be a tentative workshop that'll be taking place at the end of January. So you'll be, you'll be receiving more information. I'll have even more information as of January sixth at our next meeting. But I would say start planning for that at the end of January. So it'll be a virtual, uh, workshop, so.
The general public?
For the general public, exactly. Um, be kind of interested to see how that all plays out. They were kind of walking us through all, how you can literally create um, smaller groups where those smaller groups don't assist, can't hear what's going on with the rest of those smaller groups. They're just focused on specific items. That's all through, through Zoom. So that's gonna be kind of interesting. I, I was having a hard time understanding it, but you know, I love technology. So I, I'm excited to see how that plays out, but, um, expect that at the end of January. That'll be coming up.
Kathy Nolan, you had a question?
Yes, um, I know we, yeah, Complete Streets has not been meeting during COVID. But I want to just make a real quick announcement, um, the Go Ojai demonstration project was installed. And it's, uh, between, uh, starting at the Y goes to El Roblar, um, in Quayama on Maricopa Highway or Highway thirty-three. And, um, I'm just encouraging my fellow commissioners to test it out whether you're driving or walking or biking. And to go to the goojai.com website where you can take out a survey and provide feedback. And you can do that more than once. Like if you, you know, tested out this week and you're on a bike or you tested out later in your car, you're in a truck or a motorcycle or whatever you're, however you're getting through. Transportation wise, you can go on there and, um, anyway, the city would appreciate, uh, comments. Um, it's a demonstration project, so it's all about testing something out. So the feedback will help us make changes or, you know, to get it right. Um, but anyway, uh, so this is for my fellow commissioners and members of the public.
There was a lot of feedback at the city council meeting last night.
Oh, I didn't watch or listen, but okay.
There were, I think they, they had somewhere north of seventy-five emails.
Kathy, quick question. How long does the demonstration last?
It's definitely gonna be up for six months, but, um, probably longer. We just have Caltrans knows and part of the issue was with COVID. They had to close the school. The demonstration isn't just for the school, but it turns out it's a safe route because the school is there. But it's really, it's for all users. So, um, it most likely will be longer than six months.
Yeah, we've got to be able to test it at some point when school's in session, I think. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments or announcements? Excellent, then at eight thirteen, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for your diligence and